Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, April 7, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semes?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. DeRoe?
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to use an aid here. This is a ream of paper and it's 500 pages. And our budget document that we gave you last week looks to be about half the size, but it's printed front to back. So there's 500 pages of material here, some quite detailed. And instead of just taking the first page and go page after page and not get there by May 13th, what we'd like to do is focus in on those things where your interests lie and get your questions. And I think that would make, and this is the same approach that we used last year. It'll get us, everyone focused on where your concerns are. And as questions develop, if we don't have the answer, we'll certainly do like we did last year and get it to you as soon as we can, not wait to the next council meeting. So again, you're scheduled to adopt the budget on May 13th. We want to know where your interests lies and your questions. But first, an overview. And this is a slide that shows the major components of the budget. The budget total was $619 million. The general fund portion is $232,000 million, which, as I indicated a week ago, is actually less money than what we currently have budgeted for the current year. We have shrunk this budget in order to balance it without a tax increase. The other operating funds includes our enterprise funds, the utility funds, and the school budget. The school budget, as I indicated a week ago, I am recommending level funding. What I'm recommending is that you give the same amount of money, you appropriate the same amount of money next year for 2015 that you appropriated in 2014. And although this is a negative number, that is actually closing out some accounts. And I want Carol to explain that to you. Again, it's level funding. If you would explain the full point three.
Sure.
What's she getting at, John? You mentioned level funding. Last year, according to the superintendent, we're $1.3 million shorter this year than last year. And you say level.
I have--
Is that including that 1.3?
Yes, sir.
It is not.
And that's why, remember what you did. I had recommended $46 million. We're using round numbers. Council met with the school board. The school board said, "We would like to have additional teachers and teachers' aid." You appropriated from your fund balance 1.3 million, okay, for the teachers. Fast forward to this year, 2014, a joint meeting between City Council and the school board. And Elizabeth, you asked the question, "What about the teachers that we appropriated? Have you, the 1.3 for, have you hired them?" And the answer back from the school superintendent was, "No, we have not." Okay? He alluded to sequestration as being the reason. But if you look at the PowerPoint presentation that the schools gave, there was no reduction in federal funds coming in to the school system and any of the data that they presented that evening. So--
Is that data accurate on their end?
Well, that is questionable. I think to be very frank, we have come to the point where we question every number that is given to us from the schools. And purposely so, because we have found that there are really serious mistakes and errors. And I'm concerned about the school finances having the capacity. You were told a year ago that our finance department was in disarray. Well, I can tell you tonight that their finance department is in disarray. And I'm concerned, I'm not passing judgment on individuals, but they may not have people there to even cut the machine on. When you look at the budget numbers, when you look at accounts, when you look at the accounting system, it's not in good shape.
And John, if I can interject here, you know, if their data's inaccurate data in on their part means that whatever we're going to do, we can't take actionable inaccurate data or, you know, it equals a mistake. And at the end of the day, the kids suffer.
Exactly.
So we have to make sure, I would think that we would make sure that their numbers are vetted before we can really say what we're going to do.
Yes, sir. And you hit the nail on the head. And that vetting process is a challenge.
Before Carol gets into that, the whole reason why I asked and questioned the 1.3 million, John, is the superintendent, as you know, proposed a budget to the school board the other night. And because of, he called it, lack of funds for the upcoming year, he has made suggestions or recommendations of making cuts in certain areas. And I'm sure we've all received phone calls. I've had no less than 100, okay, about the cuts that he's proposing because of them having to cut about 5.2 million. And so I met with him today and talked about these 5.2 million dollars and the 1.3 million is part of what he has calculated in as city reductions. But the others, he talked about were the increased costs and the health care and the VRS.
Well, let me address that, because it's-- It's a little bit of funny math on their part, okay? All right. The amount of money that we appropriated total was 139, 139 million?
For the general fund, it was 134.
134. Now, when they returned the 5.2, Mira subtracted the 5.2 from the 134 and do the math. And that's what, that's not, that's not how you do it. That was the year before's money, not this year's money.
Yeah, in other words, it appears that they are reducing their current year budget threshold and telling all the departments and school operations that they have to now operate on $127 million total budget, which makes no sense.
You appropriated 134. They can spend 134 and spend it all by June 30th. But they've got this notion, and this is not our number, this is coming off their spreadsheet, they're showing that their budget is 127. Now figure that.
Again, I know we're just starting to go through this process, but when I got this report from the superintendent, I can tell you, and I don't think anybody on this council is going to support these kind of cuts in education.
Well, let me, let's use our general fund, okay? For all practical purposes, it's a decrease, but the only service we're cutting is the mountain patrol, okay? We're not making wholesale cuts by going to, once every two weeks in garbage collection, or cutting the number of EMS, the number of police, none of that stuff. You would think that if you have a level funding in 14 and you can do STEM, you can do the planetarium, you can do Starbase, if you can do it with 46 million in 14, then why can't you do it in 15?
Right. And I asked that very question, and that's when he explained the increase that they're experiencing in this year's budget is a delta of 5.2 million dollars. And so if we don't give them at least an additional 5.2 million above that, then he's got to go and cut these programs to make up for that.
I don't believe it.
Well, I'm just telling you--
And let me, let me give you another example, okay? We've told you about our health insurance cost. Their health insurance, the amount that they're appropriating is going from 10 million to 19 million, almost double. Now ours has gone up.
Everybody's--
But it hasn't doubled. It hadn't doubled.
They're showing in their budget an 88% increase in health insurance costs over what they actually spent last year. And if you read their budget explanation, they say they have a 12.8% increase. And so, you know, we're trying to make sense of why the numbers don't correspond.
Well, one of his suggestions in here for the possible reduction, the first thing is for them to go self-insured, and he shows an $800,000 savings, okay, with the health care piece. That's just one. And he goes, and that's a good move.
We've been trying to do that--
That was suggested by our city manager.
Understand. But again, that was the first one. And he listed, the way he, and I don't know if you saw his presentation, but the way he presented his presentation and the order of priority in these cuts, these things are damaging to our schools. And I was concerned enough to talk with him and also talk to the chairman, who I've been on the phone with for an hour, who's down in New Orleans. We're not going to make these cuts and we're going to support our schools. I hope we're clear with that. Now, where the numbers are and where the 1.3 million is and whether he's got incurred costs on the school side, we've got incurred costs. We need to get down to those level of details, but we're not going to have teachers running around here saying they're all going to get laid off and we're going to cut all of these programs. I hope nobody here is prepared for that.
Nobody is, Mr. Mayor.
Not for sure.
As long as we set the table in the right order, then we can go through with this and then we'll get to where these numbers are. This 5.2 million, as he's saying, is a minimum because of the increased costs. I think he said it was about 2-plus million with the VRS that they've got that he calls a must fund. And he calls another 2-plus million into the health care and some of the other things. And he broke that down to his board as well. So the chairman is committed to getting back here. He's flying back in tonight and we're going to meet probably tomorrow morning further on these numbers here. But it's 5.2 million that's causing all of these cuts. And I think when I asked in the presentation with yours, how much consideration did we give on the schools' requests and how much communication had we had with the schools on these must fund items and these costs that have increased over the last year?
Well, let's go back, okay? I think, really, instead of using the word "cut," let's use the word "right-size the budget." What is the budget necessary to have a quality education in Portsmouth? That's what we all want, right? That's what you're saying, Kenny? All right. It's well documented using their numbers that they, there's been an overappropriation on the part of council versus the actual dollars that they're needing to run the school system. And think about what's happened to teacher salaries in the last decade. They have gone up. We shouldn't be ashamed of that.
That's right.
But even with that, over the last eight years, they've accumulated a surplus, a misalignment between what you appropriated and what they use for the operating budget, and this is not hyperbole, it sounds like it, $92 million. Now, that's taken the $50 million that the grand jury looked at and adding three years, which brings it to 92. So you have been laying money on the table that wasn't needed to run the school system. They're using it for running the school system, giving teacher salaries, and having a ton of money left over. So exactly, I mean, our first scarce resource is time. Our second is, is money. And so exactly how much money is needed to run the school system? I go back to the start of our conversation in our exchange bill. I have no, I don't have the confidence in the numbers that we're getting from, and that's not to say that they're trying to hide numbers from us. I don't think that they have a handle on it. They don't have the capacity to have the handle on it. They don't have the capacity to understand their budget. And if, make a bad decision now, it only gets compounded in the future by another bad decision. And we've looked into their accounting system and it makes, it doesn't make any sense. It does not make any sense.
They're on the same system we are, though, are they not?
They're on munis.
You know, last year, we sat at this table, and Elizabeth brought this up, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, we asked the superintendent, okay, $1.3 million, do you want paraprofessionals or do you want teachers? It was teachers. And we come back, not quite a year later, talking about new budget, come to find out not the first teacher was hired. So that on top of the grand jury findings on the Virginia Pilot's investigation, all the numbers, and I don't, I don't think anybody left town with any money or anything, not advocating that, not accusing anybody, but I agree with you, John. I just don't think that they know where the money's been spent, what department it's in, what should be there. But the fact that they took the 1.3 million dollars, didn't hire the first teacher that they said they needed, is very disturbing.
Particularly when--
And that's part of their credibility gap with the public and with this council.
Particularly when you said, "We'll guarantee your check. If you, if you need money at the end of the year, come see us." I mean, you made that guarantee. And to a person, there was no objection. There's money to be saved, and I made this recommendation last year, I'm making it this year. We need to streamline our operations. We need to consolidate our finance. It's not about power. It's not about trying to have territory. Typically, when you have a school system that's in a university town, you have a very good school system. Would you like to guess at the size of the population of Albemarle County, where Charlottesville is? And they have a consolidated school system. There are over 108,000 people that live in that area. And they have one finance department for both the county and for the schools. Hanover County, you know where Hanover is? You go north of Richmond.
Yeah.
They're above 100,000 in population, too. They have a consolidated finance department that serves both the county and the school board. It can be done. You can't mandate it. It's got to be mutually agreeable by both parties. But it does away with all the mystery, it does away with all the duplications, which is really important, because you're going to take that money and put it right back into the classrooms.
And that's all we are, everybody, everybody in this room, that's all we want to do, is put it in the classroom. Nobody wants to pay more for health insurance and all that. All we want to do is educate these children.
Exactly. There's one more. I'll give you an example. Fall Creek County has got it consolidated. So there are plenty of models out there that are very easy to turn to, very sophisticated local governments and school systems that work. And they take it beyond that. Not only just consolidating the finance, but doing consolidated services. We don't need to have two sets of custodians. We don't have to have two sets of building maintenance. I mean, we've already proved that we can save money with this consolidation of the bus fleet. And nobody fainted, nobody got run over by a bus, nobody got hurt in that process, but we're saving money.
I think we all agree that there are opportunities in being able to merge and do some things. I think we started off in a dictative fashion and the board received that as very disrespectful, that one, we mandated or told them, and then two, we went incorporated in our last year's budget that they were going to do it. So we kind of put them in a position where, let me finish. I'm just telling you the feedback I got, that because of the approach that we took, it started out adversarial. And once we do that, we lose all of these opportunities to trust and build things that will get more money into the classroom. And so, again, those are the type of things that I want us to try to avoid as we going forward, because there are opportunities, but there are separate boards and we've got to be able to sit down and have those conversations and show in a dialogue that these things are beneficial and someone don't think somebody's trying to skin somebody else's cat. And that's all dealing with approach and how we do that. And they felt, one, very disrespected in that manner. And then the other one is, we keep talking about the surpluses that they have. And just before you arrived, the superintendent stood in this room and gave us a very detailed report on some of the funds that they got through the American Recovery Money from the federal. And they showed that they had some one-time surplus money and they were not going to go and make long-term decisions using that one-time money. So that money had some, I guess, excess there that they were trying to use for one-time type things. We keep couching that as they're just laying in cash. Then they came and gave us a report here from the state of Virginia. And this is from this Department of Education in May that acknowledged that there were going to be surpluses. And the state superintendent put out a memo to all school systems stating that any locality that has met its required local efforts or the standards of quarters and all, and they could have that excess money to roll over into 2014.
I don't think that's why that--
Now, we all got this memo--
That's on textbooks.
Understand. But then they come down in the bottom of this, and not only did the Department of Education acknowledge that there were possibilities for those overfunds, they went to the General Assembly and had the General Assembly, and it says here, "Adopted in their budget that also encourages certain localities for funds to be carried over into the next physical year," and this is the language that the General Assembly used. "Localities are encouraged to allow school boards to carry over any unspent local allocations into the next year." And they said it was encouraged, but again, it's one of the things, they wouldn't have wrote this if they would not known that looking at the cuts that they were, had coming down the pike, that they would put something out here to say, "Hey, look, back off on these guys." And we have not ignored this knowledge, but from the, the money here from the federal government, from the 2009 physical year that expired in 2012, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act gave them some infusion of cash that allowed them to absorb some of the hits that they would have taken through the state and the local. And so--
May I?
In a nutshell, I'm not defending surpluses. I'm just saying, we see here that President Obama, in this act in 2009, gave them some insurgents of cash and the school systems on the state level recognized that there was a surplus and sent a letter out saying that we may allow them to take money over into the next 2014 year. So, and when we make these statements out in public and in the paper, we keep saying they're laying in cash and they're squirreling money away. And, and, and I'm just thinking what other school districts that may have been helped by the federal government and use this memo from the Commonwealth to allow their local governments to allow them to transfer that money over to the next year. And we're sitting here picking a fight over these words. I'm not reconciling it. I'm not saying some of those past practices that the council and the school board agreed on, that we need to be sitting here trying to create or recreate those fights. We need to move forward, and if it's consolidation or whatever it is, in a respectful manner, that we all make sure that we have focused our eyes on the prize, which are the children, and cut a lot of this rhetoric down with trying to embarrass each other. That doesn't help any of us.
That letter you're holding, it deals only with textbooks.
Yeah, they call it, "The State Direct Aid to Public Education Funds permitted to carry forward from physical year 2013 to 2014." It says, "State Direct Aid to Public Education Funds." And so it's--
And also--
A textbook component is in it, but it says now here also, "Any," it says, "Carry over any unspent local allocations into the next year."
Remember how the state budgets, they budget on a biennium basis. When they make an appropriation, it's for the whole biennium. You appropriate on an annual basis. 15.22506 of the Code of Virginia requires that before any funds can be spent, even carried forward funds, they have to be appropriated by you. All right. I sent you an email today that had a Daily Press article that was January 28th, I think it was, 2013. The very last paragraph, it was about the Alawak County, reminded the readers of the Daily Press that unspent monies of the school board have to be returned to the local government before they can be carried forward. That's the missing link. The citizens of Portsmouth, yes, the Federal Recovery Act money came, it came in different pots. It came through the community development block grant, but it has nothing to do with the $92 million. The $92 million is your money. It's the money that you appropriated for the local school system. Has nothing to do with the feds at all. So there are separate pots of money here. We're talking about where, and you've only got, as you'll see here, you've only got a limited source of revenues. Real estate tax, personal property tax, the meals tax, the lodging tax, the auto license tax. Your biggest source is the real estate tax. We're the highest in the region at $1.27. We're the highest in the region on personal property tax. When you start looking at our other taxes, if we start going up other than the cigarette tax, we're really pushing them for those. If we were to go up on the meals tax, think about the double whammy that that gives to our restaurant businesses here in Portsmouth. They have customers who say, "I've got to pay a toll to get to Portsmouth and then to come back, plus I've got to pay 1% more for my meal." I don't care how good that restaurant is in Portland, often. Let's see what you can get.
Can I point something? I just want to make sure everybody understands, even though it's on the screen about the level of funding, I know it's, 1.3, that 4.3 million dollars that looks as if it was a cut, if I'm, correct me when I, when I get say something wrong. 1.3 of that is the money we gave for teachers that was not spent for teachers, correct?
That's correct.
Which, which if it was spent for something else, it was, I won't use the word, but it wasn't right. The other 3 million dollars for construction projects, roofs, et cetera. So that's akin to fixing a roof on your house, putting a roof on your house this year. You pay for it one time, if you're lucky, you don't have to pay for it again for another 20 years. So that wouldn't be recurring money. So that was one-time money, which is why that is, looks as if it's a decrease, but it's not. It's extra money that we actually went into our fund balance or savings account, or whatever you want to call it, to pay for, for that one time. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that was $3 million that was what the schools said was left in their school construction fund. And in order to close out that fund, they asked council to appropriate 1.8 million of that for the two roof projects that we subsequently found out had already been completed. And for projects that they were, that were going to be budgeted in the city CIP, that they transferred money over for. So that was, that was a one-time use of funds to, to get that school construction fund down to zero and get it closed out.
So it wasn't things that you, that are recurring, it was one-shot deals that had to be taken care of at that time?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so any increases that they're incurring in these other areas this year, this 5.2 million, we don't recognize that their costs are increasing just like ours?
I don't think that--
Kids, today we're going to do bakery frosting.
Let's do bakery frosting.
Thank you, Deborah.
On that note--
I think it goes back to the very start of this. I think we have to look at every number, not once, but at least twice, if not three times.
I don't disagree. I think we all agree with that. I'm just saying, we've got a couple of issues here. One is a little diplomacy when we're dealing with another elected body, because again, if our focus is doing this, we don't want to go in there with an adversarial relationship. And I think we started right out of the gate with that, from their view. And then--
From their view.
And, right, from their view.
That's a two-way street, Mayor.
And that's exactly right. And then, and then we're talking about these incurred costs that they have increased this year that we have not recognized. And I want to make sure that if the VRS and the health piece has increased that much and we show, and I think in the front of your budget, you showed to us increases that we were incurred right out the bet last Monday when you came in. You talked about our increase, our VRS rate, you show $1 million, you show $1 million for debt service. So the school has increased cost as well, and if we're not accounting for that, I mean, is that--
We are.
Is that irresponsible on our part or not?
No, no. Give me a second. And looking at their budget, we feel that $46 million-- In looking at their budget, we feel that $46 million is adequate with money left over to meet their cost needs for next year, taking into consideration the things that are impacting them like they're impacting us.
Okay, so you just say you gave them 46 million last year, and we're going to stay level, and then we just incurred new costs, and you're saying that 46 million you feel is still adequate to do that, just like you just said, it's a two-way street, and they don't feel that way. So, we've got to get down to...
There's a difference between feeling and knowing, okay? And I think that's where the issue is.
Okay.
They can feel an awful, awful lot, but I, I'm telling you tonight, I really don't think that they know. I don't think that they understand their numbers.
Okay. All right, go ahead, let's go ahead with this and then we'll, but I want to at least get this part out.
You know, we're, we're talking about specific funds and money, but even before that is still the accounting practices and how they're accounting for the money. And Mayor, to your, your point, it's not us that call those things into question. In fact, the latest revelation, professor at ODU, plus the, the head of the accounting department at ODU weighed in it. In fact, as I recall, he, he said they need to clean up their shenanigans on the way they're accounting for the money.
That's a pretty strong statement from head of, professorless head of an accounting department at ODU. That's pretty strong.
And I, and I think I prefix what I was saying with, we don't want to get into past practices that this council has went along with and previous school boards have gone along with. We're not going to get anywhere trying to fight those old battles.
Ain't doing it.
Okay, so to keep bringing that up and what they're doing, I don't think it serves anybody. I think moving forward is what we're trying to do because of these opportunities that we may have here.
Moving forward if the accounting practices are the accepted accounting practices for miniscule morality. I mean, you can't, you can't move forward and, and, and keep those practices the same.
I, I don't disagree.
You're going, you're going to run in the ditch again.
I think the school board is in line and said they're all in favor of that, with going with the category funding and making sure that we're doing these things in the way that we want it. That grand jury report we keep referring to was just as tough on this council for not doing its job as it was the school board. Remember that, because we're the body that okayed that. And all of what you're okayed for the last, well, how many years? Sometimes you want to use five years, sometimes you want to use nine. But all of those things were blessed by this council. So, in our attempts to, if we're trying to shoot one body in the foot, and you're doing it to yourself, I'm saying drop that foolishness.
Not shooting one body in the foot, we, the whole city has got a black eye from this, whether it's this council, whether it's the school board.
Exactly.
We're the talk of the region.
So, we're moving forward.
As long as the accounting practices are corrected.
And the school board is in concurrence with that.
Our city manager and our CFO says they're doing it right. Then I'm, I'm a happy camper, okay?
And I think that's where we're going, okay? All right, so let's move on and...
Major general fund revenue producers, real estate tax, I mentioned that to you, it generates one cent on, and that's, that box right there is, equals $678,000. Personal property tax, one penny, $37,000. The restaurant and food tax, 1% equals a million. And again, that doesn't account for any loss in sales by having the high tax. Motor vehicle license and fee, each dollar that you go up, it doesn't generate an awful lot of revenue, it's $68,000. The lodging tax, we're at 10%, if I remember correctly.
8%.
8%. Generates 87.5. So, you have a balanced budget. If you, if you want to do something different than what I've recommended, which is, you know, you're the boss, you either have to rearrange your priorities, or you got to find a new revenue source. And at the last, last week, a member of council asked what would 1% increase for our general wage employees, non-sworn people cost, and that's $346,000, let's say $347,000.
You don't have to protect me, John. I asked, okay?
Yeah, okay, Paige asking. And for retirees, because, you know, it's one half, it's another 118. So, you would either have to find $458,000 in reductions or come up with additional revenue. Use this example, you would have to increase the real estate tax by a whole penny, because you don't do half cents here. Or you would have to increase the personal property tax by 13 cents, or increase the meals tax from 6.5 to 7.5, or the motor vehicle license fee by $7, or a combination of any of those that, that you think works.
What's the motor vehicle license fee now?
It's $25, which is, it's, that's fairly consistent with our neighboring communities.
Hampton's got 35.
Yeah, Hampton is the outlier at 35.
And there's a cap that the, the state puts on it, and it's...
Right, currently that was $33. You can't charge more than what the state is charging for its licensing fee.
But that's one time, I mean, you just pay it once a year.
That's it, yeah. It's the old auto decal, which we don't use anymore.
Well...
All right, well, that really, go back to the first slide. We want to find out where your interest is and what your questions are as we go forward between now and May 13th, so that you feel comfortable, 100% comfortable in adopting this budget.
Why don't we go around and give everybody a chance to throw it at you, and I'll just start. I think you already know my first is to make sure this school matter is, is resolved and we have detailed information. And my other concern, major concern, is the recreational piece that we had only a million dollars and, and the philosophy that we're going to use. And we'll start, Elizabeth, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to back you up just a second to this motor vehicle license fee.
Right.
Our current fee is 25, and the, and the maximum is 33.
Yes.
In our, in the neighborhood, so to speak.
Chesapeake's at 23, Newport News is at 26, Norfolk's at 26, we're at 25, Suffolk's at 26, and Virginia Beach is at 25.
And what was Hampton, 30?
35.
35.
So, and seven, an additional $7 generates 476.
Correct.
Okay, that was not really my question.
Okay, go ahead, you got your question.
I was just clarifying. On the mounted patrol.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
You know, as I said to you before when you brought it up, I, I understand that we have two horses and one qualified rider, and because of that, we can't use them but so much, and it costs a lot of money to keep the horses going and take care of the stables and that sort of thing. So, now that this is out there in the community, there's been a, a lot of conversation in the last couple of days about the business community coming back to the table with additional funding for the mounted patrol or that kind of thing. And, and my pat answer, which I think is right, is either you put a lot of money in it and beef it up, or you kill it, one of the two. But I'm just curious if you, if you put a lot of money in it to beef it up from the point of view of tourism, from using it for, recreation's the wrong word, but I, I had a man come to, up to me Friday night at the First Friday event at the Courthouse Gallery, who really kind of tugged at my heart. He was probably in his 30s, and he grabbed me and he told me about growing up in Lincoln Park, and he had just come out of the Army, he was a retired staff sergeant, and how the NIO, who was of course Officer Shields, who was now the mounted patrol officer, was his NIO in Lincoln Park, and Deputy Brenda Lundie. And he said those two women got him out of Lincoln Park, got him interested in the horse, the horse is, used to take him to the stables, and he told me all about how horses were the great equalizer, young, old, black, white, rich, poor. It was a very interesting conversation. I, I would expect to see him tomorrow night at the council meeting.
Well...
And he talked about opportunities for young people to interact with the horses. I, I don't know, it gave me a very different perspective I'd never thought of. I, I always looked at him as either law enforcement or tourism. I never looked at him from a personal perspective.
That's a wonderful story, and, but that's one person.
Yeah.
You've got 98,000 folks, and what benefit does the other 97,199 get? There might be some middle ground, there might be a way, if they auxiliary police officers, I'm just talking off the top of my head, would do the mounted patrol and we give them a stipend. They supply the horse, they take care of the horse, they bring the horse, they ride the horse.
I guess the simple question, is it the horses that cost so much or the officer? I feel like we have the officer either way.
Well, yeah, but when that officer is designated to that unit, we lose that officer for a more tactical mission.
That's all that officer does.
That's, that officer is assigned to the mounted patrol, that's correct. And it's, it's a cost benefit, and we knew that this was going to be an emotional thing.
It always is.
And the first time I saw, you know, I came to Friday night too, was the first thing I saw, I ran into smack dab almost into the back end of that horse. And I thought, well, this should be interesting tonight. And sure enough, somebody that I grew up with in St. John's who lives at Crank, uh, Great Bridge, came up to me and said, "Johnny, you got to keep the horse." You know, I get it. But again, when you look at the cost benefit, it's not there.
Like his Chesapeake horses, that they don't have?
I don't know.
They don't have? Matter of fact, I think we're the only...
Does anybody have them besides Virginia Beach?
We did a survey.
And that's right, does Virginia Beach still have them?
Virginia Beach, Sarah, still has a mounted patrol unit.
Do they?
The next closest one is probably up closer to Richmond. I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody within 90 miles of here other than Virginia Beach that still has a mounted unit.
And that's what our survey showed, is that it's, it's, it's a nice thing and it's spectacular, and it is good crowd control. I mean, it, in general crowd situation, you don't want to take on someone that's sitting on top of a horse. But, you know, we, we don't have that here in Portsmouth. We have a better use for our personnel and for our resources.
You done? Paige?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to say, I think the mayor said the other night, but guys did a great job putting this budget together, especially without raising personal property or real estate taxes, I thought it was good. But, you know, the 70 would never satisfy, so, you know, our, our city employees, like all of us who work for, for some levels of government, most of them had, didn't get raises for about four, five years, so. We got them three last year, which we, which we're proud of, but we, we wanted to get six, and my hope was to get the other three this year. So, my question to you is, what does $5 extra on the vehicle tax cost get us, does it get us to 346? You following me?
Yeah, I do, and she's going to do the math.
Okay, because I just want to give them that 3%. I want to get, give them 3%, I think they deserve it. You know, we do a lot of stuff around here that we take a lot of credit for, but we just sit up there and dream it up, they actually make it happen.
Yeah, that would be 340,000.
Okay.
Very close.
So, if we, if we did $5 on, on the, added $5, that make that, we're now at 23, you said?
25.
25, took it to 30, we could, we could do that additional 1% for our, for our employees.
I recommend though that you not ignore the policy of, of doing the half percent, half of the increase for retirees.
Half of the what now?
Half of the increase.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's fine too.
Yeah. And so, you're really looking at 458.
Do we need, we need how much?
We need 458, 400...
What gets us there, $6?
$7.
$7? Well, I'm going to suggest we do the $7 then, because I think that's imperative that we do that, you know, everything's going up for them to include their workload, and we can do that, and we can get enough people to agree.
I thought your, I thought your proposal already had included, what did your proposal include, 2%?
2%.
Talking about us now.
I'm trying to give them 3%.
I thought our objective last year was five, and we wanted the five, and...
No, our objective was...
Because I balked at the three, and you said, "No, we're going to go to do the three because we'll do the other two next year."
Which was the five?
No, I'm saying, that's what Paige said.
No, 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 no. My objective last year was 6, 6%. He can tell you that because I, because I went, I talked to him about it point blank, was 6, 6%. He said he could only get three without raising taxes. So, we settled for three. And, and my, and my point then was, will we get the other three next year? But this is next year, and now the time to get the other three. So, if we can do a one-shot, $7, and that'll get us there?
Does that include the constitutional officer employees?
It, it, well, currently we have 2% in for the...
The state's getting it.
You're waiting to see what the, right, sorry.
Okay, it may be enough, if the state comes and does 2%, then it frees up some of that money, doesn't it?
Yeah, I believe we did the calculation, including the constitutional officer salaries.
Without state, without state money.
So, if the state passes their budget...
We assume some state money.
We might have some extra money in there.
I think the base, I think that calculation...
With that 2% in there, right? Is that correct?
And, and that's what I would recommend too, that you not ignore.
I'm not, I'm not going to ignore them, but, but the state passed their budget with 2%, then we have, we may not have to use the whole 7 then, right?
That's...
I'm, I'm just doing it.
Oh, no. I wasn't, I wasn't skidding it that close.
Either way, we can do it with the 7, you know?
Yes, sir.
If we have 7, $7 extra.
Yes.
For the decal.
Exactly.
We can do it.
Yeah, is that a...
I would do that. I would support that, absolutely.
I would prefer we put all this stuff down and look at it in totality and not go in here and nitpick it, because I think there's some other issues with some of these other things that we're going to need funding for, and if we start picking off one now and not having something later, we're going to get ourselves in a bind.
Well, Mayor, that's how you do this, you do, you do nitpick a budget to make sure you...
I understand, I think we're going around to make sure everybody has included what they want in here so we can start going through this process, not already tonight saying, "Yeah, let's do that." Is that not what the intent was, to get around and make sure you had what everybody's interest was and what we would like to see further information on as we go through this process to ratify this budget by May the 13th, correct?
Correct, but if you can solve, you know, if you can come to closure on something, on something that's good...
Why string them out? We got four people tonight that want to do that, why string them out and have them, have them come back to the table?
Well, there's no need then for any of us to make any expressions, because if that four that have already agreed to do something, the rest of us just need to quiet.
So, we have four?
It is an open process, is the way I view it, and we're all entitled to our point of view and what our preferences are. We want the best for the city, we also want to make our citizens to feel comfortable that we are not bogging them down with something that we can work out and resolve in a way where we can achieve our goal and at the same time solve what our problem is. We know we can't do it all at one time, but we need to face it in terms of the priorities. We do know that come what may, children are indeed our future, because we aren't going to live forever. And that's the generation that's going to have to come up and make the decisions that we are trying to make now for them. So, we didn't grow up and become wise and know it all. I think we need to have an open mind and try to find the best solution that would help us out of the situation that we're in. We know we have a problem, but it's not, your point is right, my point is wrong. Let's listen to all of it, put it on the table, and then come up with not only a rationale, but how are we going to explain it to the people who put us here? They didn't just put us here to think about what's impacting us, it's what's impacting all and every community, and all of us have some priorities that we want. So, let's put it all on the table, and let's be fair.
The purpose of what I was saying, I don't think anybody... The purpose of what I was saying, I don't think anybody was opposed to what Paige was doing, but I don't think we're ready to start voting on stuff.
There you are.
We're gonna hurt something somewhere else unless we hear what everybody has concerns.
And that's what I want to hear.
And again, this education piece is major. And if we get in here and find out we in fact need to come up with five million dollars, I'm not ready to say, well, we voted the other night to do this and now we can't get to five. I think we need to make sure we prioritize...
Well, Mayor, I was expressing my view, and you jumped in on my conversation. So, you got to say what you wanted to say, Elizabeth got to say what she wanted to say, I was saying what I wanted to say.
Right.
So, what you need to do is...
But then you want us to vote on that. I'm saying we're not voting on anything, is what I said.
Because you can't have it both ways.
Is that not what I said? We heard what you said, but let's not get into voting tonight until we hear everybody and then we get the manager and the staff to go and look into these things and then we'll get back to this point.
Yeah, but I wouldn't send them on a wild goose chase if one of us thinks something's wonderful and everybody else goes, eh. You know, we all said, yeah, we like the idea. Fine, add it to the list. Then there gonna be twenty more ideas.
That's what I would do.
So, we'll add that to the list, but we're not gonna, right. Okay. All right, Bill, did you have anything?
Oh, yeah. I got a few things.
All right.
One thing, the five million dollars, as you mentioned, I can vote on that tonight and it would be thumbs down until the mess, and that's top of my list. Clear up the school matter, mess, matter, what have you, so we know what the numbers are, make sure they're vetted on their side. Because we can't, I'm not gonna support any funding until they've got a clear bill of health, that their numbers are correct, been fully vetted and accounted for. I think to pour more tax money into it right now, I think it's like timeout time. Let's get it right. Let's get the accounting practices right. Let's get somebody to assure us, again, we've been assured numerous times, that they were gonna get corrected after the grand jury report, and they weren't, as we discovered. So, that needs to be, that's top of my list. The other thing is the REC study. I need to, and I guess my colleagues would like to hear, I know in your presentation you mentioned a million dollars, and you mentioned about converting the old Churchill Library to a recreation facility. I would have to have some details on what that would consist of, what we're talking about. To me, it's still an old vacant library at this point. The REC study said, fix what you got, try to partner with schools, and I think you mentioned that on your budget presentation, which is good. The other thing, expenses out of the budget. Every year, we talk about spending money, but I like to hear about some savings. Now, the horse stable is a saving, and I think that's justified. I haven't had the first phone call from anybody lamenting that the horses are going away. And in fact, if we do sunset that program, I think it would be a wonderful use of that facility to make it into a dog park, instead of trying to fit it into a community across the street from residents. I think the stables would be an ideal place for a dog park. The other thing is the flood study. We've got a flood study that's probably gathering dust, and it's probably going on about six years old now. Six years ago, it said it would cost us, I think about a half a billion dollars to remedy our flood situations. We still have homeowners that are experiencing flooding. We still have ditches that aren't piped correctly. Some of my colleagues, in fact, Vice Mayor, myself, and Councilman Meeks, took a trip out to Highland Biltmore and saw firsthand a flooding situation. There are other flooding situations around town. So, I would like to see what kind of money we got going into that. That's an elephant. We at least need to be putting some money to remedy a bite of that elephant each budget cycle. So, you know, on the expenses thing, gasoline, fuel costs, as you know, are on the increase again. And I had mentioned, a lot of cities have idling program where they monitor the city vehicles, make sure if you go into Seven-Eleven, get a cup of coffee, you're not leaving your truck or your car running. I know from being in the distribution business for a number of years that fleet monitoring can save a lot of money. So, I think we need to look into some equipment that will monitor the use of fuel, use of the vehicle, use of the idling aspect of it. Especially as diesel fuel, I know, is probably approaching four dollars a gallon or close to it. Along with the expenses, I hope we don't back off on any of the consolidation opportunities with the school. And I do agree with the mayor that it can't be confrontational and get it done. We have to, perhaps we have to be the salespeople. To help us sell that, define what the savings are in real numbers. And I'm sure at the end of the day, they work for the same public that I do and we do. You know, if pressure is put on them, let it be from the public side.
Can I comment on something you said?
Hold on. Dr. Edmonds, you up, sir?
My concern is REC. I always feel like the REC centers are number one, not discounting the schools in the neighborhoods, not just a recreation complex. And making sure that the schools can be there to supplement the REC centers or be there until we get REC centers appropriated, if there's some kind of way. Also felt the same way Vice Mayor felt about the raise for the employees. That's one of the areas that I had already written. When you laugh sometime, everybody's already said what you're gonna say, so. And the other concern is trying to straighten out the matter with the school board, to see, you know, sometime we on the verge of calling people incompetent. I don't think that's the right direction to go. And I do think that the way that they operate is based upon past councils who have allowed this situation to go on, and there's come to a point. But I feel like there should be some way where we can resolve the issue. I don't know how, and we've been dialoguing, it still hasn't worked. But I do feel like that something has to be done there so that we can have some absolute closing matters to how we're gonna handle that before we adopt our budget.
It's true.
Ms. Rand?
It's, the only thing, I'm very emotional about schools. That stuff is one of the reasons I came to the council, because we've heard being short-changed, and some of the people sitting around here were the same ones, who voted against many of the things that we were able to bring into our school division, to upgrade it to the point that it is now. Did not support many of the things that gone on. Our schools have gone on to elevations and they've done magnificent things. Still means that there are other things to be done. But at the same time, we need to recognize the fact that I'm only our schools, but our neighborhood qualities, there are disparities that are out there in our neighborhoods, that people have had to live with discomfort and all while we've branched out and made things more affluent in other communities. I think we need to look at equity, regardless to what type of community that is in. It ought to have the things that are in the vicinity for a desired community. If we feel as if a recreation center nearby should be for the community, we should make sure that it's part of our plan, not just for what it's downtown, to take care of downtown, all over town. If we have citizens there who are paying taxes, they ought to have a part in the pie of how that money is spent to upgrade the quality of life where they are living. Not only that, we need to make sure that there are not disparities in terms of the resources that are put in communities. Because all the people, when they become homeowners, buy a piece of the pie, and part of that pie goes in to promote everything else in the city. We need to keep that in mind and not make things so distinguishly different that you can see that there are inequities. Regardless of where the community is, people have the same desire, goals, and aspirations for their children and their families. They want a faith-based institution. They want a recreation area. And we need to plan that so it's not just in a community that is more affluent. And we have not gotten to the point that we work our pie in that direction. We still have disparities in our cities, and they are disgusting. Walk through them if you have not realized where they are. And yet, we can talk about things on the waterfront and everywhere else. Everybody don't live on a waterfront, but they still want the best in their neighborhoods for the quality of life that they are trying to provide. And we need to keep that in mind. We represent all the people. It's not just downtown and Cavalier Manor and Old Town and somewhere else. We represent the city. And we ought to think about that when we think in terms of fulfilling the neighborhood needs. Faith-based, education, community resources for the young and the old, because our population is living older. And we need to think that way. It's not about me, mine, I. It's about us, we, and all. And until we think outside of the box, we aren't gonna make any progress, because we're gonna be, I'm gonna be fighting you about what you want in your community, and you're gonna fight me about what's in my community. You're gonna be concerned about what's happening in everybody's community. And that's my feeling. That was the reason I left the school division and came to the city, in terms, from the schools to the city, because there were so many disparities out there, and we were not getting it where we needed. And that was with the education of our children. And we still haven't gotten to that point.
That was one of the reasons why I brought up the issue with the REC centers, because again, if we're gonna, if we're trying to partner with our schools to get some commonalities and some synergies, I mean, they got a, and I mentioned this in the State of the City, the Boys and Girls Club was an out-of-the-box thinking that they did seven years ago because of the very inequities and the things that we have now in our communities. And they opened up those, three of those schools, and we have, on average, about a hundred kids to stay back after school, to get help with work, to get a bite to eat, to get mentored, and all of those things. And the only reasons it started at one school and we just got it to three is because we're trying to do it with private funds. And I worked with the board and them to get the funds to do that. It's not that much money. And we could do that in our schools, and we could fund it and show them that, yeah, you guys got a great idea that we want to adopt and do. And I'm afraid that we're on this track of trying to open these schools up at six-thirty at night. These kids aren't gonna benefit from that. And most of these kids, we got fourteen thousand kids in that school system. And the reason we started with the flagship school at Hodges Manor, it was such a big hit, we moved it to Douglas Park. And that agency, the Boys and Girls Club, ran into financial difficulties about three years ago. And several of us were upset that they cut it out, and we put together a board to get the one back at Hodges Manor. And because the need at the junior high level, because these kids are lost trying to wait to get to high school, that we moved the sixth graders back to elementary school, there was very little going on to the junior high. So, this board said, why don't we take the kids that are coming from Hodges Manor and the kids that may be coming from Douglas Park, and we'll open up one at Waters Middle School? So, you have kids that are already used to the boys and girls concept in elementary, so when they go to junior high, because these junior high kids, and they're having a lot of issues, that is something that's been recognized, and parents and grandparents love it. And for the little amount of money that we raise, and some of us even raise funds so the kids won't have to pay, I think the dues are maybe five or ten bucks. And some parents won't pay that. So, some of us business people either donate money or we do fundraisers. And I know at Hodges Manor, they do fundraisers, so if a kid or a family can't afford the five or ten bucks, we don't promote it, but we pay it for them, because we don't want to turn any kid away. So, it's about a hundred kids at just those, each one of those schools. And I think that's a golden opportunity to use those schools immediately after, to let those kids at Brighton, at West Haven, and all these other places, instead of showing that we're trying to create something because we want to reinvent the wheel because it's ours. As a golden opportunity to say, what did you do there? What kind of numbers you have? And how can we can throw a little money there and do a lot more with those kids? Because, again, we are talking about our whole community, but we've got fourteen thousand kids and over sixty-five percent of them on free and reduced lunch. And we're truly losing those kids at three in the afternoon and seven. And I mean, so again, one of those things that we could go with the school and partner with and say, what are you paying for these? What if we took that on and expanded that school? You would at least knock out a lot of your school-age kids that can hang around and get that extra help. But I just think of stuff like that, going to them, proposing things, and I haven't been to them on it. As a matter of fact, they called me after the State of the City and said, that was a great idea. We didn't know that you knew about it. And most people didn't know we have a Boys and Girls Club. And it's only because we don't have a community center here to be able to set one up like they're normally set up. I went five years ago to Virginia Beach to the Rosemont Place and saw what they're doing over there with their Boys and Girls Club, and saw the number of kids that they're helping at that standalone facility. And if we had something like that, we could probably do much more. But it's way too expensive. So, the school concept of using the schools, that's where it came from. And so, again, I just think those are opportunities that we can, if we truly...
They're already in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and they're already in the neighborhood. The parents come pick them up at six-thirty. I mean, it works great. And you're looking at the Santa Claus. I'm Santa Claus every year. I mean, it's a no-brainer that we can use some of our funds and not get into trying to, you know, because I'm still concerned about those kids. We still have test scores, we still have dropout rates and all of those things that is all of our responsibility. That is not just the school's responsibility. And so, you're right, they're right there in the neighborhood, and you may not need to do some of these other things. I mean, that was my concern with the whole recreation piece and using something that they had to at least say, hey, you got something great you're doing. We want to do this. How about we do that with you and show some good faith that we're trying to work in that effort of bringing best practices? Because they really do. And I don't know how many of you talk to them, they think we're dictating to them. And I try to share, that's not what we're trying to do. And if somebody's coming over that way, we need to stop it, because we are trying to utilize or best utilize our tax dollars to be able to educate our kids and to make sure until such time as to get the right type of community centers and things like that, we utilize what we have and try to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, two things. First, Mayor, I'm on the corporate board of the Boys and Girls Club and on the Resource Development Committee. So, if you ever want to really explore that, I'm open to talk to you anytime you want to. The cost is actually fifteen dollars per person. Rosemont is the only standalone of all the cities.
Yes, it is.
No one else has standalone. The rest of them are in schools. What we need in Portsmouth is something for the high schools. They transport, Northwood has them over there. The high school kids are not involved. This year, we had scholarship recipients participate in a contest for a scholarship. No high school person from Portsmouth was in the contest, because there are no high school people involved in the Boys and Girls Club in Portsmouth. So, the big push for Portsmouth is to get the high school kids involved. Now, our colleague bought two buses that he's donating to, Mr. Meeks, to the Boys and Girls Club. So, if we can get one of the schools that currently have the club to allow the high schools to come, they can possibly be bused over there. But that's the big push right now, is to try to get the high school kids involved. Because I was upset personally, because no one from our school district got to compete for the scholarship. You know, yeah, and I made that point at our last board meeting. So, that's what we really want, trying to do right now. One other thing... do right now. One other thing was going back to Mr. Moody's comments on the drainage, you know, he was talking about drainage. We did have some fun, not fun, but slopping around out there in Highland-Biltmore area.
It's sloppy out there.
It's very sloppy out there. But Richard Hartman, before he retired, used to give us a briefing every quarter, month or so. He had this list of drainage projects that we went down. I forget if you guys remember that. Edmund Heights was at the top of the list. Edmund Heights, Highland-Biltmore, I can't remember other neighborhoods. But if we could revisit that list and find that and pull it out somewhere, I think it has all the data that we need to know where we need to be working at right now, because they were prioritized.
Yeah, Confrontist Park was being...
All of them were on the list.
Edmund Heights, all those, they were on the list. So, we can find that list and pull that out, and that'll give us some directions, some direction where we need to go.
I think that's a good point.
The other thing, Mayor, if I might add, Councilman Meeks, Vice Mayor, and the mayor and myself were out at Craddock Little League Open. They have over 200 ballplayers for the first time in, what'd he say, six, seven years?
Long time, yeah.
And the president of the league informed me that that's the only field where, when it starts to get dark, they can't play ball, because we have no lighting out there. Now, I realize that that field is in St. Julian's, but I got a feeling that we could partner with the Navy and probably get some lights out there. But we need to get some lights for those ballplayers out there. That's a fine facility. In fact, they just won a contest where, I think, middle of April.
Tides.
Yeah, Tides contest, where the Tides, the groundkeeper's gonna come over and do a complete makeover. So, it'd be nice if we could get lights out there to really showcase that field. More importantly, make it enable the kids to be able to play at dark.
This is good.
Well, start.
Very good.
A good idea.
Okay.
We do need a closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Someone want to take us in close?
I move you to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose. Discussion concerning the discipline of a city employee subsection A1. Discussion concerning the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the city as permitted under subsection A3. In consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff pertaining to a matter of probable litigation concerning a zoning matter as permitted under subsection A7.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks is absent. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Emmes?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.